In terms of ratios of people to asset to other communities. And then this is something that they really noticed with us and you're going to see. This was a longer term project and through the project we did a lot of work with Mr. Minister Rickford's office. We were very successful with the city. It's very aggressive at pursuing external funding opportunities for major capital projects. Here's some things in terms of what we learned. These are stats you will have seen before. Population, median age, average household size, number of households, who owns and who rents, and the percentage of people that identify as indigenous in the community. There were a number of foundations that they identified for the plan itself. Equity and inclusion, accessibility, affordability, viability, reconciliation, collaboration, climate action, and leadership. This kind of funnels in and I think that this is, you know, one important thing that I want council to lead with today is, you know, and it's really the next slide is by ranking the quality assets themselves and then asking the community what they felt is most important. When councils face with funding decisions, you know, this opportunity versus this opportunity going forward. This is some of the things that the community identified as being most important to them. So that should help sort of guide you going forward. So again, this is part of the bigger plan, but when you look at indoor assets versus outdoor assets. So light blue is outdoor, sorry, indoor is light blue, green is outdoor. That's actually the rating in terms of what people saw within the community as being most important to least important. So again, faced with capital decisions, we want to make sure that this somehow lines up. And Kyle talked about in the council reports how it speaks to the strat plan. Well, it also speaks to all the other guiding documents. So the staff will try to make those linkages when they're putting forward recommendations for things.
Counselor Moncrief.
None of this surprises me. I mean, internationally, nationally, nationally, locally. And following up with Counselor Bernie's comment about issue. Independent, unstructured play is the trend for any kind of recreation. This is, this just reinforces that and I think we have to consider that when we're looking at funding.
Yeah, excellent. Just in the, yeah, in, so I'm just highlighting this again, I'm not going to read it or anything like that. There was a couple of things when I started here in 2019, you know, we need another ice surface. And there was all this talk about the twin. And actually, I will low just for your own information. March 2019, I did a very full report to council in terms of looking at the twin. Have a look at it for your own interest. But basically what it says is that the level of service is for every person, for every seven, four hundred and eighty-four people. We have one ice surface which is considered to be above average. And the recommendation was to not have another ice surface. So the two things I want to just kind of highlight to you. The other thing is ball diamonds, okay? For every eighteen hundred and seventy-one people, we have one ball diamond. And their recommendation is actually that we could reduce the number of ball diamonds in the community. And we've actually proven it from a calendar standpoint that we can meet the demand with lesser ball fields. So I'll just leave that with you. And pickleball, anybody that's been out to our wonderful pickleball facility. Pickleball is the fastest growing sport, I believe, in the world. And they're just saying, you're doing a great job. It's a great facility and that's great. They talk about some of the, there's, again, I'm going to lower this up. But it just talks about in terms of indoor recreation and outdoor recreation. Some things that they would suggest to us that council consider going forward. Expanding the footprint in the fitness center. Well, really, if we're going to do that, we're going to be spending millions of dollars. Because we've looked at that building, there's no way to sort of expand the fitness center without doing a fairly significant expense or investment. Look at ways to reduce emissions and environmental impacts of the arena. If you look at the bigger users of utility in the city, it's going to be the rec center. It's going to be the wastewater treatment plant and it's going to be the water treatment plant. Those are the big pieces of power. We did do an application for ISAP funding for a solar solution at the rec center. It was a five million dollar project and we were not successful in doing it. And the idea was we were going to use that roof surface to put a huge solar array up there and then maybe a wind turbine and then capture and harness all of that energy. And then when, you know, the sun's down, have a mechanism by which we could power that building back. And we would have probably a five to seven year return on our investment. But unfortunately, we, we were not successful. In terms of the observations and recommendations, well, they're suggesting a fully accessible playground in Northwood Park. Well, we got the funding for that and that's been ordered and that's going to be installed in 2023. Yes, that's great. That we should look to develop areas where free quality play spaces will have the greatest impact. One of the things when we were again working with this Minister for Rickford's office, we were looking at what we can do in Central to enhance the area there. And working with RC Strategies, they suggested that a playground go there just given the distance to other playgrounds in the area. We were successful getting funding there. That's been ordered as well. Look at renewing the existing ball diamonds to enhance the ball any conditions. The conditions of those ball diamonds are not in a good place. So again, you're going to see another slide related to that. And the tennis courts at the rec center needs some work as well. Terms of parks and trails, there should be, and this is their recommendation, not spaces. But I just want us to create a sustained budget allocation for trail, park, and beach infrastructure, including capital and operations. Develop a strategy for reducing environmental impacts of parks operations. Continue to enhance public docks, boat launches, and arena. Support infrastructure, focus on the city's urban tree canopy, which under the asset management legislative obligations, the city has to do a lot of work. There's a, the next milestone, I believe, is in two to three years where we have to actually log all our green assets. So imagine what a huge undertaking that's going to be for the city. And then they talked about investigating the development of a trail center at a strategic location. And they thought that the best spot for that would probably be around Long Island or Tullaline. In terms of service delivery, continue to look at the ISAP allocation and user fee policies. Collaborate with various sports groups to enhance opportunities for sport tourism and tournament hosting. Again, that's tied to hotels, but we do have a lot of good amenities here. If you look at the sportsplex, perfect example. You know, Heather and her board has done a lot of work there. The mezzanine now is fully completed and can be used. Their office was hosted there in 2019. There's things like that and other, the Nordic Track, for example, where we can look for sport tourism opportunities. And just in terms of some of the areas where they suggest that we look at enhancing. One of the things is community gardening. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to see what's going on in Kuwait and how's that, that's expanded since 2000, I think they broke ground, Heather helped me, 2019, they broke ground there. They've done three expansions since and we've talked to them about other expansions in other locations. It's been, it's been fantastic. Even talked about bees.
Just had a question, Stace, maybe you can comment on this. You know, you talked about, I was going to ask it actually after you mentioned about the second, the second rank and that really it doesn't support, information doesn't, or evidence doesn't support having it. Remember the conversation that was had a while ago about bringing a junior hockey team to Kinnoro?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if with your connections in the business world, is this a conversation that's ever come up? Is it something that is, you know, even on the radar? Is it feasible? Is it?
That's a timely question. There is a group that's come forward and we're actually meeting on Friday at 10 o'clock. What I'll tell you that I've seen in the past is that people have talked about the opportunity. And I said, well, okay, if you're going to be talking about an opportunity like a club, the business plan around that should be very fulsome. And I haven't really seen that. So when that group came forward about four weeks ago, I strongly encouraged them, not only for their own investors and their own, you know, their own financial viability, that they need to flesh out a very detailed plan. And that's what the city would be looking at to help, you know, council, Mayor Council evaluate any sort of discussion.
Interesting. Be curious to hear how it plays out.
Just some historical data. That has come up a few times and it's never been feasible.
Yeah, it's.
Those times. Could be now, but it hasn't been.
The challenge is daytime ice is not a problem. It's, we only have one full size ice surface in Qura. So we do have two ice surfaces, but you're not going to put, you know, eighteen and over playing in Kuwait. The surface is too small. So then when you have all the competing other ice times, you know, we've got other user groups that have ice times like the high school programs and like thistle program, where you've got all these competing interests competing for a certain size ice surface. It does create some challenges for us.
I hope, yeah, I mean, hockey's not for everybody and I get there's other priorities and yeah, certainly everybody is not, doesn't support the hockey. But I think, you know, you look at smaller communities in Northwest Ontario that have a junior team. I remember always his name, Kevin McCallum. He was the fellow that was trying to, I think, leverage the hockey team with Kinnoro here before. He went to Thief River Falls and brought his, and brought his business plan down there. I think it'd be beneficial if there's a way, I mean, you talk about being aggressive and leveraging our business, your business connections and Kinnoro's open for business, I think, it's a trade off, right? All, all the reasons that you've described are legitimate reasons, but I'd like to see it succeed if possible. I think it'd be good for the community.
Yeah, let's see what they have to say.
Yep.
Thanks, Stace. So here's the final slide and this is, they talked about the city aggressively pursuing funding opportunities. This is just some of the monies that we would have received in the last year. So dehumidifier at the rec center, the rec center never had a dehumidifier and that's why you had summer ice in Kuwait. Now that that dehumidifier has been installed and fully operational, not only for things like the Koi Bay Mount that are going to be taking place, we can better control environmental conditions there. So we do have a major project, you're going to see at the bottom there, but which is to replace the dry pad at the rec center, which we hope to do this summer. But once the dry pad has been installed going forward, unless there's enough demand, we will see summer ice go into rec center, which will give the city opportunities to have labor synergies because we don't have to have people going back and forth. We have eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars going into the Cloud Park Playground and enhancement around the watchrooms there. We have six hundred and seventy thousand dollars funding to support the harbor front detailed design. We have five hundred thousand dollars of funding going into city parks, including a new playground at Central Community Club. So that includes the Kuwaitan beach area, includes the old ball diamonds in Kuwait and many other parts where we're going to be doing some enhancements there. We've got an additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollars funding to install a fully accessible playground in Tots area in Harbor Park. That's largely been ordered. It's going to be one group that comes in and installs it all in hopefully May-June timeframe next year. We got five hundred thousand dollars to support enhancing the ball diamond infrastructure. So that's more about the infield mix. You would have seen some of that taking place at the end of this year. Five hundred thousand dollars going into the Kuwait Memorial Arena. So that's some facade improvements, that's air conditioner there or sort of dehumidifier there that's giving us some problems. And then that mezzanine second floor area needs a lot of work. We're also going to put in an accessible lift going up there so that people have mobility limitations will be able to go up there and see from the viewing area. We've got four hundred and eighty thousand dollars going to improve our docking infrastructure at beaches. We've got a hundred and six, beaches and just public docking areas. There's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars going into the Pocket Park on the corner of Second and Chipman. Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars going into the Peace Park. What happens, the council's aware, is groups that don't have, charitable groups that don't have certain statuses, they have to co-app, they do applications with the city for funding. So Central Community Club Board is a perfect example and Rotary Club is a perfect example. What that means is the city sort of oversees the project. The city is responsible for ensuring that proper procurement policies are taking place in line with our procurement policies. And our finance department will oversee the financing of that project, you know, the issuing of checks, the progress payments and that sort of thing. So Peace Park will take place. That was supposed to occur this year. That was delayed for a number of different reasons related to COVID. That will take place next year. Eight hundred thousand dollars going into the rec center parking area. And then three point six, six, seven million dollars going into the rec center upgrades. This is all, in addition to this amount of money here, the city has all contributed as well. So you'll see in the 2022 or 2023 capital plan where amounts were already, you know, built into the budget. So that's just taking what our amount of investment would have been and usually getting about sixty-seven percent dollars of extra funding.
So Counselor Van Wellingham or Counselor Moncrief?
When we're doing these co-applications with Community Central and Robri, are we allotted like an administration fee for the expenses that we incur in this application or is this just sort of?
It's, that's a very good question. The answer to that is no. And it is, it's a lot of work for staff to administer these things. You know, you've got the facilities department, like Central, and that whole procurement process was a very huge undertaking. So it does take a lot of time. I guess one way to look at it is if we didn't have these partnerships, that some of these projects and enhancements wouldn't occur in the community. So it's, it's one of those things that council, previous councils would have said is, you know, an important part of the community and that's the way we move the community forward. So we don't as well.
Okay.
Counselor Moncrief.
Just for clarification, if the city's the applicant, then we can't include that as a new kind of contribution. But if the community group is the applicant or the city as a steward, you can include the city's contribution as an incline which could boost the value of the project and allow you to get more money. That's just a little point there. Also, under outdoor amenities, you've got outdoor public art in your plan. None of that is listed in there and also Husky and Husky, where does it fall? Is it art tourism? What is it? Anyway, just a point.
Yeah.
It should be in there to boost that maybe because there wasn't money spent on that in the last year.
Yeah, it's, it's captured in here in terms of the Cloud Park, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So that's, that's already part of that overall project is being there.
Okay, so your worship, this is for you. I'm here, outdoor public art. I think it's important that we, before that becomes an investment or someone tries to donate something to us, I think the city needs a public art policy and also art in public places. Because if someone tries to donate something, a good example is the Ukrainian egg on the harbor front. So we have no policy about that right now. We don't have a policy about art that the city owns or art that someone tries to donate that's held in this inner public place. There's no policy on that and I think it's important for us to develop that before we get into a situation where we're, where we're having.
So this screen right here though is just capturing the fact that the city through
Right.
Staff, senior leadership, secured nine point three million dollars in grants
Yes.
from the Ontario, there are a variety of levels of government. That was the purpose of this. It doesn't capture all the things.
No, I know, but in the plan though, as, as outdoor amenities, it's also listed, outdoor public art. I don't want to get into a situation where we have something coming in for next year's financial plan and we're not prepared for it. That's all it's saying.
Murals would be a gap, okay? So what's happened is, you know, there was a public, a group of volunteers that went out and they, they did these murals all over the place and there's no, there's no policy around preserving those, those murals. So it's a good example. Just if I could pick up on something that we said, though, Counselor Moncrief. Labor, internal labor for these funding applications in most cases is deemed to be an ineligible exercise. That's me.
Any, any questions of?
Well done.
I just want to, I, I think I've done this before, but I think it's important for the new council to recognize, you know, any year or fourteen months to leverage nine point three million dollars for that list. I mean, that's all inclusive. That's, that's right across the spectrum of almost every area of recreation. So, and I know it was said with the last council that, but just so the new council appreciates. That money turns into what, Stace, fifteen million maybe that we're going to spend?
Yeah, no, yeah, it'd be pretty close to that. Maybe not fifteen, but it'd be pretty very close to it.
So we're doing a lot of things that we couldn't afford to do currently without that additional help, which means someone went out and wrote applications and apparently we're very good at it here to secure funding. So anyways, kudos to staff.
And these are things that this council will all benefit from, okay? These projects, anything that is tagged NOHSC has to be completed 2023, okay? The ISAP one, which was the large one at the bottom, that's a five year project. So you're going to, you're going to see a lot of change that's going to be meaningful for the community, not only the residents, but the visitors as well in the next very short period of time. So it's very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stace.
Close this off?
Yeah, that was the other presentation.
All right. I don't know because we have to do that.
I can go next.
That's that?
We had that one the other day.
Yeah.
A law one.
Your worship, who's left on the document next?
It is emergency management overview. So I'm not sure who's, I'll leave it to you two to decide.
Do you need outlets or you?
No, I've got my document. Okay, your worship, members of council, thanks for allowing us just to speak briefly about our emergency management program. Similar to the presentation we did on the fire department, there's certain lenses that we have to look through and that we have to follow with emergency management. So Kyle asked me to put together a fifteen minute presentation. So just want to talk about the Emergency Management Civil Protection Act. So that's a piece of legislation that requires the municipality to provide certain services to emergency management. One of their doctrines is the emergency management framework for Ontario. So that basically spells you how, how you're supposed to do everything. And then you'll see one of the pieces of legislation requires us to have an emergency plan. So we'll talk, talk about that. Components of emergency management, just, it's, it's all encompassing. So when we look at emergency management, we think that, you know, we tell people that they should be somewhat responsible for their own fire and life safety and I think that applies to emergency management too. Everybody has a role to play as an individual for themselves and for their family. And then it can go all the way up to the federal level to, to the Prime Minister, et cetera. So it can work back and forth and it's certainly expandable. So the Emergency Management Civil and Protection Act, it sets out the requirement of an emergency management program. So part of this section is about municipalities and part of the legislation is about provincial ministries. So again, we're not too concerned about provincial ministries, although we do interact with them. So it talks about the implementation and maintenance of emergency management programs required by municipalities. So we'll just talk about what were required by legislation. So we shall have to develop and implement an emergency management program. And the council has to approve that plan by bylaw. So it was last brought forward to council in 2009 and approved in that bylaw number. So as you saw in the strat plan, one of the things that will be tasked with, hopefully in 2023, is to bring an updated plan for your review and ultimate approval. So we have as a municipality, we have basically four requirements as part of the legislation. So we have, we have an approved plan. We have to provide training and do an annual exercise. So we just did that about two weeks ago at station, the fire station number one, where we have our emergency operations center. So we'll bring a report to council probably in January, just that will outline our annual compliance requirements of both the FPPA and the Emergency Management Act. But the legislation says you have to do training and you have to do an exercise annually. You have to do public education throughout the year to, to certain risks. So you'll see throughout the year with emergency management, they'll have various campaigns that we will onboard and just kind of go on with the province and then promote them throughout the community. And then of course, the old catchall, the province obviously has, anything else that they decide we require to do, they always have that little caveat to say that, you know, you shall do this on our behalf. So. Part of the, the program is what's called a HIRA. We talked briefly about that at the fire presentation, the hazard identification. So we use that for the, not only the fire master plan, but the community profiles that we were addressing. But you have to do, you have to basically do a HIRA, which we've done. You have to check it every year to make sure that you don't, your hazards haven't changed during the municipality. And it has to be reviewed. So that is being done. The chief and I have done that and it's also being looked at by the consultant. We hired to do our training and exercise. So we have to have an emergency plan, as I mentioned. We'll, we'll get into the details of that later on, what's actually in the document. But it was in 2009, it was adopted and I believe the last iteration or update was in 2020, I believe. So we talked about training and exercises. So we had our emergency, the members of our emergency operations group in our EOC a couple of weeks ago, we did some training on incident management systems in terms of how we actually manage an incident and then the review of the plan. So I've reviewed the plan with the chief and the consultant's going to review the plan again. But again, these are all part, will be part of our annual compliance requirement and document that we'll send to the province. The head of council has a responsibility in the legislation if we ever have to declare emergency, which sadly we've done recently. So the head of council is the one that declares it. The head of council is also the one that terminates it. So there's certain documents, provincial documents that have to be signed and then delivered to the solicitor general to notify them of the emergency. The premier obviously has powers over the whole province. And then again, the old caveat is they can require municipality to provide such assistance as he or she considers necessary to an emergency. So really, if there's an emergency, you're always working not only as a municipality, but you're using your provincial resources to do the best you can to mitigate the incident. So this is the framework for Ontario. The reason I included this document is it just kind of spells everything out as to what the municipality requires. So quickly we'll go through it. The, the concept of emergency management, as I'm sure you're all, all aware of, is kind of the five pillars. So obviously prevention, which ties into our public education. Mitigation, which means what can we do to prevent the emergency from happening? Making sure that not only us as municipality, but individuals are prepared. Obviously, we need to respond to emergencies should we have one. And then unfortunately, if we do have one, then you have to have the recovery phase. So there's basically the loop of the five, five different elements to the emergency management program. So just so you know, the province has legislative requirements, so they have what's called the proverb, sorry, Provincial Emergency Operations Center. Its operations is open 24/7/365. So we would call them if we wanted to get a hold of the provincial fire investigations division of the Fire Marshal's Office, for example, or if we wanted to notify them of any pending emergencies that might be coming and/or if we actually activate an emergency. Again, they have similar requirements to the, to the municipalities in terms of their ministries all have to have emergency plans specific to their ministry. They have to, you know, train on those plans, et cetera. They also are the ones that manage and operate the alert ready system. And then they have provincial involvement. So if we had an emergency, we would have an advisor that could come here and assist us. We have an advisor that reaches us to, reaches out to us periodically just to see how we're doing in part of our emergency management program. So quickly, the, the operations, Provincial Emergency Operations Center is in Toronto. Again, it's part of the 24/7/365 operation and they have staff there that can manage that, that operation constantly. And they have staff there that can manage that, that, that op- operation constantly. They develop training programs. So the chief, as the community emergency management coordinator, he has to take a specific course that's related to that position. Both of us have several, uh, several courses we've taken through the province. So they develop and provide training throughout the province, not only to their staff, but also to the municipality, uh, so that the people that are in, that have roles and responsibilities within the legislation actually have the proper training to provide that to the municipality. One of the things that, uh, the province is moving towards is an incident management system. So incident management system, basically you have your, there's a different slide that I'll show, show later on. But you have specific, uh, positions within the hierarchy that are assigned certain tasks. So you'll have your emergency operations center, which the primary one is in the fire station. We have the room there. So there will be somebody in that room, that's the incident commander, who's kind of in charge of everybody that is in the emergency operations center. Now, that is different from the incident, uh, incident management. So there's another slide that I'll show you. But basically, they're saying that there, there's kind of a defined hierarchy that they're pushing towards the IMS system, where you have an incident commander. That incident commander has support in terms of an information officer, liaison officer, and safety officer that report directly to them. And then it's basically in four components. So you have an operations sector, chief planning sector, chief logistics sector, and finance sector. So our current plan does not reflect this hierarchy, but it's certainly something in two thousand twenty-three that I hope to revise the plan and move towards the incident management system. Again, that will be brought forward to council for their consideration. But that's where the province is directing municipalities to go in terms of managing incidents. As I mentioned, they, they provide, uh, you know, a framework for preparedness. So selfishly, municipalities usually kind of just jump on the provincial lead and kind of promote the, the material that they provide. Although we do provide our own specific to the municipality, we'll certainly leverage any time that they do something. Again, we're all probably familiar with the emergency alert system. So they manage that in Toronto out of the provincial operations center and send messaging out throughout the province to, uh, to all our cell phones as we get periodically. And they also provide funding. So I'm not gonna speak much on this, because this is more of a financial thing. But the municipality, as you know, with the floods, is applied to the province for assistance with our emergency. And we also provide information to our citizens where they could apply to the province again for financial assistance based on our flood emergency. So our emergency plan, our current plan, as you can see, is very detailed. I think it's a hundred and twenty-seven pages. It's almost, in my opinion, too comprehensive a document, because it's almost too specific. In an emergency, you kind of need to be able to manage the, the amount of people involved in the emergency, and it should be able to fluctuate up or down. And I have a slide later on about that. But, uh, we have to have an emergency program committee. Usually, the head of that committee, in my experience, has been chaired by the, by the mayor. And then we bring in people that would be partake in that emergency. The reason I put this slide on is this is something I think we need to move to, and I quite honestly think we're already doing. So basically, you have different response levels depending on the emergency. So I think normal operations is the day-to-day business that we do as a municipality. We knew a couple of weeks ago that there was storm coming, uh, and that's possibly an emergency. So, you know, Marco and his team would have ramped up to say, you know what, this big storm coming. We're gonna need to, you know, have extra plows, make sure our equipment's ready, et cetera. So that, to me, is normal operations. And then you have enhanced monitoring. So maybe during that snowstorm, you know, the CAO is getting reports from his staff to say, you know, here's where we are with the snowfall, this is the prediction of the weather. You know, do we need to enhance our, the service we're providing, enhance the equipment that's out on the roads, et cetera? Then the next level would be if it, you know, if that snowstorm got to that point, maybe Kyle would say, you know what, okay, I need to have a meeting with certain players of his senior leadership team to deal with that snow emergency, for example. And then ultimately, the last one is a full-scale where, you know, Kyle would report to the mayor and say, you know what, we need to declare emergency. We wanna bring everybody together and deal with that. So I think that this is my experience, and this is where the province is pushing, that it doesn't have to be an all-or-nothing approach, it's scalable. So if Kyle wants to have a conversation with one person as the CAO about an emergency, you know, that's part of the plan, it can go up and down. If he wants to bring more in, uh, he can do that, and if he wants to downsize, he can do that. So I think that's the direction of the province, and I think that's the direction that we as a municipality should, should move to. Sorry, Mr. Worship.
What would make up of this committee, in the previous slide? What, who, who would be part of that committee?
Of the emergency management program committee?
Yeah, you keep saying the head of council and the head of council.
In my experience, yeah, in my experience, your worship, it's a meeting of, uh, you know, the CEMC and alternate. The, the CAO would be there, OPP would be there, EMS would there, uh, probably somebody from Hydro and Gas. Anybody that might be collectively, you know, that has a plan that would have involved in an emergency. So you as the chair of the committee and the mayor, you would kind of be the chair of that meeting, and you would go around the room, and everybody would give updates in terms of their preparedness reports, what's going on in their, in their world in terms of emergency management, et cetera.
So I've been in the room up at the, uh...
Station one, the emergency operations?
Yeah.
Yes, sir?
And, you know, there's pods there, and there's, uh, you know, it says, you know, the hospital or whatever the organization is. So that's what you're referring to here?
In my experience, your worship, no. In my experience, that, everybody would go to that room during an emergency, and that would be your emergency operations center. That's when you're actually dealing with the emergency. The program committee would meet quarterly, twice a year, and just talk about emergency management. And everybody would update each other in the room as to, you know, has there been any changes, your worship, in, you know, the municipality's emergency management program? And he would defer to the chief as the CEMC, and he would tell the room, you know, this is what the canor is doing in terms of emergency management.
So just from my own point of view, uh, having a more of a comfort level, is there something that we can do, uh, instead of when an emergency actually occurs and then all of a sudden, like, that room's filled with people? Is there, is there, is there something that we could do in the interim so we're better prepared for it? And including myself? Like, because that scares me when I hear the head of council, the head of council, the head of council. And I know where the room is, but beyond that. And I started reading through the, uh, the document, but it is long, it's cumbersome. And it's, like, to be quite honest with you, after fifty pages of that, I was...
I think we're speaking more to the planning group here, though, than we are the day-to-day management of an emergency. So we're like, twice a year, every time. And, and I think that, to answer your question, training is really what we need to make sure that everybody has a shared understanding of what the expectations of their role is. So we would set up some training.
Yeah, one hundred percent. The, the training that we did, uh, this past two weeks ago was more of, uh, to meet our legislative requirements. I mentioned to, uh, the CAO, I think that in January, we kind of need to plot maybe three calendar dates, you know, whether it be quarterly and say, you know what, this is when we're gonna bring somebody in, and this is when the CEMC is gonna train the organization. And to your point, your worship, I think, you know, twice a year, we put in a program management meeting, and we invite all the key players. And you as the head of council, as the head of the municipality, just as the chairman of that meeting. There's no real other obligation, I think, in terms of that program committee meeting. It's just kind of a high-level, you know, you'd rather have the conversation, to your point, prior to than on an emergency scene, when, when the pressure is there and everybody's kind of...
Because we know something will happen. I mean, that's just like, it's the reality, something will. And that's hopefully nothing bad, but something will occur. And, uh, the comfort level for myself and maybe the rest of council, because we're ultimately all responsible, but is to know what to do in a case like that. And, you know, God forbid that something does happen. But, uh, learning during an emergency is maybe, like, for myself, is not where I wanna be. So.
A hundred percent. Your worship?
Your worship is not... Oh, sir. So, um, you just talked about it a little bit before, but do you, your major exercise, is it yearly? David, you do the major disaster or major emergency exercise?
It doesn't say anything, your, uh, counselor, about a major exercise. It says you have to do an exercise.
Gotcha. Did you say you did one a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, we, we brought together, so similar to the, to this emergency control group, you see there's basically the four components. So we kind of brought those four players together, uh, with the chief and myself as, uh, the CEMC and the alternate CEMC. And we kind of just did a little scenario in terms of what would your roles and responsibilities be if you were assigned to the operations sector, to the planning sector, et cetera? So we kind of played, did some role-playing throughout the course of an afternoon, and that will meet our obligation or our requirements for the legislation. But in future, I would bear, warrant an emergency that ties us up for months and months, I would rather do a larger exercise or have several of them so that everybody can kind of get their feet wet, so to speak.
Well, and, you know, speaking to the, to Mayor Poirier's comment, if he was able to be involved in that, it's a dry run, right? And then it's a major, like, what would a big one be? I just, I'm thinking, there's one done years ago, it was a train derailment.
Yeah, I was, yeah, part of that.
Yeah, you're part of that. So I think if, if something like that being planned for the future, or is that... Go ahead, uh...
Yeah, I could speak, and last year wasn't part of the city's emergency plan, but it was part of the airport's emergency plan.
Gotcha.
We participated in their large-scale events, so we had a lot of our players involved with that.
Yeah.
And that was actually the same company that did our training came up. They brought the, uh, aircraft simulator and put it out on the runway and things like that. So that was kind of involved a lot of the different players. So there is opportunities for larger scales. And lots of times, it's, you know, scheduled out with it, you know, on a three-year cycle. Year one, you'll do a tabletop. Year two, you get a little more involved with some other players. And then, you know, the third year, you'll do something larger scale and kind of build from there. But there's always opportunities to work with the airports, and then the OPP and EMS are involved with that and stuff.
So that one with the airport, is that something that possibly that Mayor Poirier could, could be involved in?
The what?
That one, that incident, or that scenario with the airport, uh, is that something that, that the council could be involved in in some way? Mayor Poirier, for example? Just as, even as an observer?
Absolutely, yeah, I'm sure there would be no reason not to.
Yeah, because that kind of stuff is, is golden for just sort of...
I was invited to this, um, to...
Training. We'll call it training.
Yeah.
Good, yeah.
Um, but we were here in, we were here in training in chambers. So it just didn't, it didn't work that day. But, um, hopefully next time and that, um, yeah. It, it just is more of a comfort level, and it's not just for me. I think the rest of council and that should be, uh, you know, privy to some of this also. And that, because ultimately, in that, there's, there's one person, but it's a group of seven and that. But, um, you know, and that's how we're gonna flow, uh, this council. So it's, yeah, and I'm not trying to put every, other, other responsibilities on councilors and that, but it's a need-to-know thing and, uh, you know, because we know something else will happen at some point. And it may not be a catastrophic event, but we still, even the flooding and that was bad enough. I mean, you know, we, there was a lot of work that had to go into that and a lot of responsibilities on some shoulders, so.
Yeah, so I, I have foresight that there's a slide coming that's gonna give a really good overview of council's role, and we'll spend some time on that. I was just gonna say, what we saw in particular with the forest fires and with COVID is all of the other agencies in the area, they've got their own emergency management plans as well, and they don't always line up perfectly. So, um, that's probably a longer-term sort of finding those synergies or that. You know, that's one of the challenges that we found, though, because it was sort of like, KESB had all these things they were trying to deliver, the health unit had all these things that they were trying to deliver, the air ambulance, and so it was just, we found there was kind of some, just some areas where you're kind of like, well, who's gonna cover that gap, right? And so that's part of, yeah, you know, part of...
That's part of the program.
Yeah, and the collective training. It'd be nice if we could get everybody from the, from the agencies, or at least a couple of people, to try and get part of that joint training as well, so we could really just have a shared sense of what we're trying to do in an emergency situation. And not every emergency involves every agency. The floods was predominantly city, a little bit of M and R. But yeah.
And that's the scalability of it.
So this is kind of the slide I, our training was kind of based on this slide. So this is the, uh, incident management system that the province is suggesting that municipalities move to. So you'll see on the left in the green, there's a site incident commander. So that site incident commander could be police, fire, EMS, hydro, depends what type of emergency it is. They, they're dealing with on-the-ground, actually, the actual incident. Everybody else is arguably in the emergency operations center. So the incident commander could be the CEMC, it could be the CAO. We have to kind of flush that out. And again, they would have potentially, you know, on this slide, you know, seven people kind of, uh, reporting to the incident commander, providing information. Now, you could have four people, and people are doing more than one role. So this just kind of lays out what the provincial IMS structure is. And then I, I didn't get into much detail on this, because you could really drill down, and I could overwhelm you with information. But that's kind of the concept, is that you have the, the site incident commander, and then you have an incident commander in the emergency operations center that is supporting that site commander, et cetera. Uh, so again, the legislation says that you need a community emergency management coordinator, which both the, the chief and I have taken the training and can assume that role. We, it also says that you have to have an emergency informations officer. So when we did our scenario, Carrie Holder, who is the communications clerk, she fulfilled that role during that day. But those are two requirements of the legislation, that you have to have those people identified. We talked about also, when I did the fire presentation, about the critical inventory. So the critical inventory is based on those, I believe there's eight different categories there. And we've pre-identified, you know, where these institutions are and, you know, what the risks are associated with that, should something happen to their, either to one of those groups or an individual building or business. We talked already about the HIRA, the Hazard Identification Risk Assessment. So you'll see in the top left, we've numbered them. I believe we've identified twelve that we're, you know, have a high risk within our municipality of having. And then it talks about, you know, how you might mitigate those risks and how you will... If you look at the last force, uh, it talks about the mitigation and prevention. So about, you know, people know that that's a possibility of happening in our municipality. So we should kind of inform them through public education. There's certain ways we can have people prepared if that should happen. Obviously, the response, who's gonna respond, and then the recovery things. So the last thing, I found this slide, I didn't create this slide, I won't take credit for it, but it's kind of the do's and don'ts, uh, for council in terms of an emergency. So certainly, we want council to be a hundred percent aware of, you know, what their staff are doing in the case of an emergency, all the way down, you know, from, from everybody that's involved. So we certainly wanna make sure you're, you understand the plan, you understand, uh, what we are doing as a, an emergency operations group, uh, and during, trying to mitigate the incident. One of the things, your worship, is, you know, there's a place for you in terms of understanding and being in the emergency operations center to understand what's going on. Because quite honestly, sir, you are the spokesperson for the municipality. If, although we have an information officer, you are the one that's gonna be in front of the camera or on the radio or speaking to the newspapers. So that is something that, you know, you as the head of council or whoever is the head of council in your absence is responsible for that. So quite honestly, you won't be making decisions in the emergency operations center, but certainly we want you there, so you understand what we're doing, why we're doing it. And then you can speak to it when you talk to, whether it be your, your members of council, the media, and/or your constituents. Just a little confusing here, CEO, so that's actually referring to the mayor. So this slide uses both the mayor and CEO. And I just wanna clarify that that's referring to the chief elected official, which is the mayor in this case. They use two different words in there, mayor and CEO. So I just wanna clarify that that's not myself, that is Mayor Poirier in that case.
So it's actually chief executive, it's not elected.
Oh, sorry.
It's chief executive officer.
Again, that could be American slide, it was kind of... It's kind of a touchy subject to tell council what, you know, we believe as employees, what your roles are. But again, you know, I'm not sure your experience, obviously, and Counsel Bernie has a lot of experience in emergency management and dealing with things. I'm not sure everybody else's comfort level and stuff, but certainly we wanna make every training opportunity, uh, available to you so that you're comfortable, that, comfortable that should be asked by one of your constituents, you know, what are we doing about emergency A that you can speak to it with confidence? And know, and have confidence in your staff that we're mitigating the, mitigating the emergency. So that's all I have prepared. I'm not sure if there's any else you wanna add, Kyle, or if there's any questions for me.
Any questions of council? Any questions of council? You guys have all the hard work.
Yeah, I guess I would just, just during the floods, initially when things were, you know, really changing on a day to day basis, we were having daily meetings as a control group. And Kent was putting together what we call an I A P and that's the first one, incident action plan. And we were sending that into council, uh, every time, one was polished, which was daily initially. Then over time, it went down weekly and then, you know, kind of by August, it was Peter and I. But just to give you a sense, that's kind of how we're in for with council.
No other question? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, your worship.
Are we, uh, I think we're, unless there's any additional items, we're, uh, we're actually at the point where we can adjourn this meeting.
Sorry, we, oh, sorry. Do we, do we want to call it an audit order? Jeff, I want to, he didn't get to last one, so I don't know if we want to.
Audible, I like that.
Well, well, it's, it's outstanding, right? So if we want to get through it, do you agree with me?
I'm ready, it's up to, it's up to you.
Do you have a lot of last, it's up to the?
No, I had just, uh, I'm going to go old school and I just have a summary paper handout. It would maybe take me ten, fifteen minutes.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Okay? So this has to do with the sustainability action plan. That's been prepared, uh, by a number of consultants working together. Um, I think it was completed in February twenty twenty-two. And it has to do with, uh, kind of the broader issue internationally and nationally surrounding, uh, climate change. And, uh, and what, uh, higher levels of government are doing, uh, to deal, to deal with climate, climate change in the long run. But also what type of actions that local communities can take, uh, that are consistent with these longer term actions that are really more adaptive strategy and adaptive to what, what may be coming down the pipe with climate change. So, uh, this is to make sure that, um, this, the city of Canora acknowledges that there are broader issues when it comes to, uh, climate change. And that indeed on a, uh, not even a day to day basis, but as part of our normal operation, certainly from a planning point of view, we need to keep in the back of our mind that we need to adapt, to adjust our policies to deal with the different, well, and it's interesting actually, coming on the heels of emergency, uh, control groups and emergency management, there may indeed be more of this in the future. And how do we design now, how do we, how do we implement programs and design our infrastructure? So it's more resilient in the future, future? And how do we modify our behavior so that development in the city of Canora is more sustainable in the long run? So that's the overarching statement. What I'd like to do is just read a script and then pass out, I'm not going to go over the whole plan, it's about thirty-six pages long. And I would also remind the committee, uh, if you recall at one of your earlier meetings, at the first meeting of council, you did appoint a sustainability, uh, committee as well. This will be their, uh, blueprint, if you will, for, um, moving forward. And, um, while it's thirty-six pages long, it has a number of, it has four key themes. And then it concludes, and I'll hand this out with fourteen action items. So one of the things I like about this plan is that it's not all just mom and apple pie. It actually has fourteen things that the city of Canora can do. But I think we will let the sustainable, sustainability committee chew on and review and discuss and then bring back to senior administration and council for, uh, for action. So if I could, this is the summary sheet and this is what I'm going to speak to and this is where it all kind of comes together, so. Put on a line up. The other point I would make, if we go back to the C A O's earlier presentation, this, I hate this too. Every time. Uh, so there's the sustainability action plan. This is also a priority in the city of Canora's strategic plan. So it's part of implementing the strategic plan. So, uh, just a quick overview statement, Canora's first sustainability action plan is intended to be a community-based, action-oriented and provide overarching guidance for a suite of projects. That's the fourteen projects I was talking about, that help build local resilience to climate change in ways that help advance reconciliation and grow the green economy. So there's some pretty high level words, but what does it really all come down to? What it all comes down to is the summary sheet that I just passed around to all of council. I'd like to touch upon the four main themes first. Uh, so theme number one is energy conservation. And of course, this is, makes sense, not from a, not just from a long-term point of view, but often, energy conservation can, thank, it's, that may be the plan if anybody wants. Um, energy conservation also can save the city in its pocketbook in the long run as well. Anytime their energy, uh, energy is, it becomes more expensive every year, be it electricity or propane or natural gas or whatever. Uh, if it's a non-renewable resource, prices fluctuate but inevitably go up. And the more, uh, as a corporation, the city of Canora can save energy, the more it can save on its operating costs. So that's kind of a bonus that they get as well. So that's theme one, energy conservation. Theme number two is green infrastructure and sustainable transit. Uh, some of this has to do with stormwater and asset management, uh, as well as public transportation. So that's, uh, basically looking at anytime we develop an infrastructure in the future, uh, we want to make sure that we're doing it in a sustainable way. Sustainability three, uh, uh, theme number three, and I kind of take a personal interest in this one myself, local food production and waste reduction. Um, I think it goes without saying that the more waste that is recycled or diverted out of the landfill, landfills are an expensive proposition for any local government. Um, they're, they're, they're difficult to plan and, and build. And, uh, they're a challenge to maintain and they have a fixed lifespan. And when that lifespan is over, uh, you have to do it all over again. And it is, again, a, a difficult and expensive process to find a landfill. So the longer you can extend the life of that landfill by, um, reducing the amount of waste, the waste stream going into the landfill, uh, the better it is both for the environment and again, for the city's pocketbook. So, uh, waste reduction is part of it. Local food production, micro farming, food collection, community gardening, near and dear to my heart. Uh, we have some community gardening initiatives here in the city of Canora. Uh, certainly when I, previously when I was in Suñeros Nestor Falls, we had very successful community gardening project there that continues to this day. And again, it has to do with decreasing one's reliance on, uh, well, increasing one's capacity to grow one's own food, uh, both for cost and for healthy living reasons. Uh, so community gardening, uh, and composting is another initiative that goes hand to hand with community gardening, be it a backyard composting program, education programs around composting, or a community-wide composting program that may be a collective that would involve our, uh, transfer station or our solid waste collection unit within engineering infrastructure. Uh, the last one is.
Sorry, uh, can Councilor Mount raise her voice?
Just a quick one on that subject. The, uh, poll posters that the city was involved in as a pilot project. Someone mentioned last presentation that that was going to be expanded, that pilot?
That's the food side.
Yeah, I, I could speak to that. So, um, we've originally, recently had the program reach out again, looking to see if we're interested in a second uptake. And so S L T is just considering that, actually, at our senior leadership meeting tomorrow. And it'll come back, um, most likely through the budget process, just because we're getting close to the end of the year with budgets.
Okay.
So we'll, it'll probably be in the twenty-three budget we expand.
Okay, so one of the questions I want to ask was, if you were on a waiting list at that time or if there were, it was sold out by the time we go in, is that, is that list kept somewhere of people that were?
I, I do not know that for sure, but I do know that we have a fair amount of, of, we have a file on the program. So I'm sure, I'll, I'll have, look, some of the people that were involved with that program, and it's inception, it's since left the organization. So just need to see what we have and hopefully, uh, we do have that list, but I don't know for sure.
Sure, go ahead. Uh, theme four, uh, water stewardship. Uh, again, uh, this is not an uncommon aspect of land use planning, the unofficial plans is only bylaws. Uh, but there are other partnerships that the city can be involved in as well. Um, certainly, uh, underwater stewardship, there are a number of objectives. Uh, the one that kind of catches my eye and I see as a high priority, we'll come back to that in a moment, is develop and implement a healthy shorelines program. We've already started to do that going years back with, uh, different provisions in our zoning bylaw and what you can, uh, build and what you can't build if you own a piece of waterfront property, either residential, well, mainly residential, mainly waterfront residential, but other land uses as well. For example, in Black Sturgeon Lake, we have a provision, if it's a residential zone, uh, that you cannot disturb more than twenty-five percent of the natural vegetation on your shoreline. And when building things like decks and docks and boathouses and things like that, that's, that's kind of a, a, a province-wide best practices that we implemented previously and has carried through to this, uh, to this very day. The other thing we use, uh, in terms of healthy shorelines and protection of fish and wildlife habitat is we've used a site, I've talked to council about site plan control before, that there's a time and a place for site plan control. This is one where if there's a fisher's assessment done that involves, uh, fish and wildlife or even water quality, uh, and there are specific locations on a piece of residential waterfront property that should be protected, we can use site plan control that says, no, your deck and dock or boathouse should go be built here and the rest of the shoreline should be really environmental protection. So we've been doing a lot of that.
Jeff, I think there is a question.
Councilor Mattson?
More of a, a healthy shorelines program, a partnership with Melaza, because they already promote that. So I think it's a good educational thing.
Uh, you were a step ahead of me. Yeah, and they have been the lead partner in the past. Uh, it used to be the Lake of the Woods Property Owners Association, I will date myself. Now it's Lake of the Woods Stewardship Association, I believe. And they have a very robust, uh, program when it comes to education awareness, uh, for their members and non-members for that matter. Uh, uh, with their, um, uh, lake stewardship program, they hire summer students, they get boat donated. They will meet with any, uh, informal or formal property owners of groups on any body of water, both within the city of Canora and outside the city of Canora. And they run, uh, seminars on, uh, how, how one can manage and maintain their shoreline. So it has a minimum negative impact on the lake and the water body and it has a positive impact on the environment. Uh, things like, and I'll just read very quickly here, and it's, a lot of it is common sense. You don't have to cut down all your trees and plant a lawn all the way to the water and then fertilizer, because the phosphorus will then go directly into the lake. Okay, that's kind of it in a nutshell, it's not a whole lot more. That's why we like to protect seventy-five percent of the shoreline, allow twenty-five percent to be developed. Uh, and, oh, and that goes twenty meters back as well, we go twenty meters back with that policy. So that we're not encouraging, uh, residents who own waterfront property to shore. We know you want a view of the lake, everybody likes a view of the lake, but it doesn't mean you have to cut down every tree for the full hundred and fifty feet or forty-five meters or whatever it is, uh, to get that view you want. Uh, you also need to temper that with keeping that natural vegetation on at least seventy-five percent of the shoreline, at least, uh, twenty meters deep to protect the water quality.
Council, just that, uh, Property Owners Association, or whatever it's called now, who's, what's the administrative group, um, involved in that? Or are there?
They have a board of directors and an executive director. I believe they have board directors, executive director, probably an assistant or assistant executive director as well.
Do you know who that would be?
Uh, I know who it was, I don't.
The former Poirier is the.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the latest executive director.
Ashley.
Ashley Ross.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
She was just hired.
Yeah, so I think she's just a recent hire.
Are they primarily from Canora or are they?
No, they're everywhere.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. But they have been very active over the years and this has been a, a really, uh, as I said, it's a, a robust program that they've run and, uh,
Big educational.
Big educational program, yeah. And, uh, and they do a great job. So that's just one example underwater stewardship, uh, and in fact, it's a, it's listed as a high priority here. So there are the four themes and then I'm just going to touch quickly, uh, on a couple of the, what have been identi- so, and within those four themes, there are fourteen specific objectives or kind of tasks. And again, this is what we'll go over with the sustainability committee. And I, I just want to touch upon the highest ones or the highest priorities. So within the fourteen, uh, there, there are a number under each theme in the sheet that I've given you. You can see they're listed as high as in kind of a reddish colored block. Then some are medium priorities and then low is yellow. So I just want to talk about the, the high ones for now. They may stay in this order, although I have flag one to be reordered already, that I'm sure Marco might have something to say about, uh, is, I don't know, item number fourteen. But if we look at the first theme, the highest potential there is to evaluate potential to develop a program to facilitate, facilitate energy conservation, retrofits for existing and new buildings. And that's just common sense, that just makes sense. Anytime, and often there are, uh, programs from senior levels of government for energy, green energy retrofits. So not only is it environmentally friendly, at the end of the day, it's going to save you money as well. And a lot of these are available for, say, local government or commercial or institutional users. Uh, for example, I think the federal government also has a program available for residential users as well. And part of what the city may want to do would be some marketing and education to its citizens or residents to put them in touch with these programs. So again, it uses less energy and it saves you money and there are some subsidies out there to help.
Yeah, Councilor Ben.
Thank you, your worship. Just to clarify, this is not something that we are currently doing when through, set the, um, community improvement plan or anything, projects or anything like that?
Not at the moment, no. No, we would be, we'll, we'll, we'll get some input from our sustainability committee on what they may want to do with, uh, marketing, uh, choosing, choosing some priorities. And, and a lot of it may have to do with education, community awareness, and there may be some marketing we can do around that. So that's theme number one. Theme number two is green infrastructure. The top priority right now is to incorporate green infrastructure into the city's, uh, asset management, uh, process. Uh, I guess we'll talk to Jay Noble about that, our asset management officer, along with engineering and infrastructure. And again, it's just whenever, you know, there, from an engineering and architectural point of view, uh, 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 there are new professional designations that have expertise. For example, if you're building a building, it's a needs building, which is environmentally friendly, energy conservation, uh, some of it is, are even zero net energy usage, uh, for, for a building. And they're the type of things we can look at as we build new assets, as we build into our asset management plan in the future. So that's been deemed to be a, a high priority. That probably would be more of an, almost more of an internal thing that we could work on. But again, we'll see what the committee says in terms of a priority. The third theme, the top priority is, uh, and we heard about it earlier, implement a local household composting initiative. And I'd almost twin that with a medium one, which is develop, uh, develop and implement a community composting program. Is there a coordinate between those two? Uh, that includes institutional and or commercial partners as well. Uh, these are not particularly complicated programs to, uh, to put together and to roll out. Um, certainly composting is good from a number of different points of view. If you're a gardener, be it a flower gardens or vegetable gardens, you're probably already composting. You don't have to bag up all your leaves and put them at the curb and, you know, that's mulch, you get it for free. Uh, there are ways to then use it on your property in a composting bin and you can use it for your own personal uses and buy fertilizer. Or, uh, it can be used collectively on a, in a, in a community type of program. Whereas if there are grass clippings or leaves or other types of compostable materials, a center can be created, for example, at the, uh, at the transfer station as part of the recycling center, become a community composting, uh, uh, center. And then, uh, many communities do this already. Uh, if an individual wants to, they can go up there with their bag or their bucket and get some composting. and get some compost and use it for their garden instead of using, instead of buying fertilizer. So it'll be interesting to see what feedback we get from the committee on that. And again, I just want to revisit the last one I spoke about already, which is the fourth theme, water stewardship. We've talked about develop and implement healthy shorelines program. We're happy to work with the Lake of the Woods Stewardship Group. And remember from my earlier presentation, in our official plan and zoning bylaw, we also will have, again, very detailed and robust policies on environmental protection and shoreline protection in our planning documents, both the new official plan and the zoning bylaw. Final note from me. I noted there was a low priority here underwater stewardship, which is identify, monitor and manage flood risks. I think we might want to bump that one up for obvious reasons. In the area of the city of Kenora, building and work done outside the city and with local treaty partners, obviously, given the experience the community had over the past year, engineering and infrastructure for sure will be... And I know in planning, we've already started some hazard land mapping in the new official plan. In a couple of areas where we're mapping hazardous lands that hadn't been mapped before, in areas, and because we see what can happen, for example, on Black Sturgeon Lake with energy, or excuse me, with infrastructure and engineering in terms of roads. And also which properties got flooded that think they never get flooded. So all of a sudden, we're kind of rethinking our high watermark and a little bit around our land use and building controls around where you can build if you own waterfront residential property. And it may be in some areas, we're going to move, we're going to move, we're going to have bigger setbacks and we're going to move you back a little bit so that, so that we aren't the ones who are responsible when a building permitted is issued and you get flooded, the fingers can't be pointed to the local government authority and the local planning department for allowing people to build in a hazard land and then subsequently get flooded and have property and structural damage. So that will, that will be, whether it's identified by the Sustainable Committee, Sustainability Committee or not, I think between planning and engineering and infrastructure, we will be, we will be working on that in the near future, given our experience of 2022.
Counselor Anderson.
How does that affect people that have purchased their 66-foot front porch?
Well, it's interesting, we were dealing with that only yesterday or the day before. Right now, we used to, we're modifying on the fly on that one. Let's use Winnipeg River as an example because it goes up and down a lot. There was a time when, certainly my previous tenure here, if you wanted to buy, if you didn't own your shore allowance, the 66-foot reserve, you made an application typically to the Crown. Or if it was a lower allowance at a planned subdivision, it would be to the city of Kenora. And you go through really an administrative process and we sell it to you. Then in the Winnipeg River, because it's so up and down, there was an aversion to selling these shore allowances. We've kind of come up with a compromise and what we're doing is we're looking at the Lake of the Woods Control Board elevation for flooding rights on the Winnipeg River, which would be, if you can visualize a 20-meter or 66-foot reserve, it would be somewhere in there. So what we're saying now is we will sell you the, and council will be dealing with a couple of these coming up probably in January. We, we're prepared to sell you that portion of the shore allowance, but not below what has now been identified as the flood, flood, the level that the Lake of the Woods Control Board is permitted to flood to. We'll only, we won't sell you any of that property that might end up underwater. Just, so I forget exactly what the elevation is. I think it's 317 and change is meters above sea level is the number. So what we're doing is giving survey instructions now is to don't, don't go into, we're not going to sell any property that, we're not going to sell you the whole 66 feet or 20 meters, just the portion that is out of the jurisdiction of the Lake of the Woods Control Board, if that makes any sense. So that's kind of a specific example, we've actually got two we're working on right now. In the past, we would have sold them the whole 20 meters. We're kind of backing it up, backing it up out of that Lake of the Woods Control Board permitted to flood level.
Next.
So heading into tomorrow, Jeff, I understand you didn't get to deliver the land disposition presentation last week. That's what Dana has dropped in front of you.
Oh, okay.
I've heard from council that, you know, less days the better. So if Jeff can deliver that in about 15 to 20 minutes, I'll defer to council if you want to hear it now. If people need to go at noon, we can, we can add that on somewhere else. But I'm just, that is the one thing going into tomorrow that we have not had a chance to get through. So I just wanted to, if you want to do it, we can do it and if not, we can talk another semester. Are you prepared? You can deliver it, you got the...
I just need that.
Well, I can...
Yeah, nobody teases it up, I think. Buck my way through it.
Jeff, this is, we mentioned the vacant lands, we mentioned the vacant land growth strategy earlier and I think it's important.
So just quickly, it's really good that this got done. Any municipality involved in economic development and I want to glance at states over here. And FDP developers, businesses, is there any property the city owns that we put by or want to build, that's why it's...
Did you help out?
That's something developers have been asking.
No, I'm just not as fast as you have it. Very slow.
Let's go to the other one, go to this.
And most municipalities don't really have a good handle on what prop, they don't even know what property they own. With the advent of GIS systems and geographic information systems, it's now very easy to... And using, and you cross-reference it with NPAC Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. Now with the push of a button, with a GIS system, you can locate all municipal properties and all the various attributes of those properties. So through, I think as an outcome of the strategic planning process, the city of Kenora over the past year or two, I think it was, I think it was Urban Systems they were working with, have come up with a full inventory of every piece of property that is owned by the city of Kenora. So what we have here is vacant land and growth strategies because land owned by the city of Kenora, when it comes to growth and development, you can think about it in a couple of different ways. One we mentioned already is often businesses or developers, if they're interested in investing in the city and they want to build a housing development or a hotel or some form of industrial plant, they're, the first thing they often do is go to the municipality and say, what land have you got? Now remember, the alternative, and what we often do is we defer them to, there's a lot of private sector land that may be as suitable or more suitable for development for them. So typically, we work in partnership with the private real estate companies as well. The city of Kenora doesn't own all the vacant property in the city of Kenora. The private sector owns a big chunk of property that is potentially developable in the city of Kenora as well. It just so happens that, as we'll see here, the city of Kenora is probably the largest landowner of vacant lands within the city of Kenora. So here it is in focus area number two, tourism growth and development. I think what that says is we need to have an inventory of all our vacant lands so that we know what we have in case developers or business investors come knocking. And also, this was part of something called investment readiness. This is an exercise, it's promoted a lot by the Ministry of Northern Development and Mines. It's been around forever, although I think the program is done now, states. I don't think the NCI, our program is around anymore. They used to have $5,000 grants or they may have bumped it up to $10,000. Where you go through an investment readiness exercise. And one of the questions that is raised in this exercise is, do you have an inventory of all municipal land and do you know what it's owned? Do you know how big it is? Do you know whether it has municipal services or not? Or whether it's rural and is on private services? So I think that was a gap that was identified when we went through the investment readiness exercise and it was flagged as something that needed to be done. So that is where this project really, that's what it really grew out of. And there it is, city is the largest landowner in the community and it does provide unique opportunities to leverage land holdings to promote development. Again, often when we meet with developers, the first question they ask is, what property have you got? And now, with literally the click of a button, and we've been doing this even since I started a couple of months ago, we can sit down and just at a computer, just, we can put in some design parameters and up can pop maybe three, four, five pieces of property that might fit the bill. And again, if it doesn't fit the bill, then we can also work with the private sector and different real estate companies to see if we can't meet their needs from business investor or a developer. The benefit from this, and I don't like municipalities to get addicted to this because it does generate revenue, right? Now, to me, as a planner and working in the field of economic development, I don't think that should be the sole reason, that is a benefit. And in fact, we do have a fund set up now. If one recalls with the previous council, the Town Island Sale is a good example. It goes into a fund for perhaps future acquisition of, strategic acquisition of land or extension of services or things that promote growth and development. Having said that, my opinion is selling land for the sake of selling land, I think you need a better reason than that. It needs to be, it's helpful if it's strategic as well. And you'll see there are different tiers that we, so here are some of the benefits. Municipal land holdings often exceed long-term needs of municipality. So there is surplus land and it's okay to, if it's not really strategic, then it's okay, you can sell it and then again, generate some revenue. Sometimes seen as a liability, yet there's significant value that can be captured. Again, anytime, you have to remember that when the city owns land, if something bad happens on it, then, you know, you're responsible too. So there's two sides to that point. But that's just the normal way of doing business for any municipality. Generating revenue from land sales and increased tax revenues from their development can be reinvested into the community. That's kind of the fund that the city has set up right now to look after that objective. It does create opportunities for community and economic development by selling land. Again, if there's a match between a proper piece of property that the city owns and a developer is prepared to make that investment, then you can get the benefit of the jobs created by the project and also the increased tax assessment. And again, part of this strategy is to, is the acquisition of lands to facilitate projects and development. And that's what we have the fund for. So right now, once the inventory is done, the city's gone through an exercise and identified some immediate properties for disposition. About 15 for short-term disposition, 19 for medium-term disposition and eight for long-term disposition. So there are 75 total. I believe that 47 are the ones that are the priorities we're looking at right now. And this is just, I'll just kind of zip through these. These are immediate term properties. Some of them are, some of them are not, don't have a big economic or community development impact. It's just they're there. It's kind of a low-hanging fruit, if you will, of properties that could be sold kind of immediately. And in fact, I think we have, we will have one coming to committee of the whole on the fifth in camera for discussion because it's a property matter. These are some of the short-term ones. A lot of these are kind of residential in nature. You can see, some of them are old parkland dedication properties up on Black Sturgeon Lake. And, yeah, I'll be reviewing where these sit with Melissa Shaw, our staff person in charge of this. These are some midterm properties. You can see there's some property, well, kind of all around, various parts. There's some on Coney Island, over kind of Tuttle Island Way, up by Rabbit Lake.
Jeff?
Yes.
Counselor Moncrief.
Oh, sorry.
Quickly, what's the process?
Pardon?
Quickly, what's the process?
The process for land disposition. We do have a policy for land disposition. In fact, you'll be getting a practice run of that in camera on the fifth. Where, in fact, there should be, Heather, I hope, a report going forward.
I haven't seen it yet.
Any rate, we have a report that outlines that that will be coming to council. A lot of it is at council's discretion, but it also is a public process as well. If we're selling a piece of property, we do have to do a public notice that indicates that we're prepared to declare a property surplus. And we have to do two things, we have to declare it surplus and we have to do a bylaw that indicates we're prepared to actually sell it. So surplus and sell. So there's a policy in place for that.
And then is it called public?
Public, there does have to, there is a public. Well, council has the discretion within the policy, whether they can do a direct sale, whether it can be through an expression of interest or a request for proposals. There's a variety of options in the policy of how council can dispose of a piece of property, depending on the circumstances around the sale of that property. But it's quite a bit of discretion on the part of council.
Is everybody familiar with the terminology, expression of interest or request for proposal? I mean, it's sort of a procurement process.
Okay, and these are longer-term properties. Some of these are the economic development ones, a big chunk down by McCann Way. In fact, we've been discussing that one in-house recently. Over by the old Kiwatin Public Works yard. The one, those of you who've been around long enough with the former town of Kiwatin, the road got put in and it goes up to the highway to a piece of surplus property up there. That one needs some servicing. And again, there's some other properties on either side of Rabbit Lake as well. So the goal, the goal of the vacant land strategy is to identify strategic municipal land holdings. Some are more strategic than others. It supports efforts to increase the local housing stock. Think Howard property, for example. That's one where the municipality owned a piece of property and the Kenora District Services Board was interested in it. I think the bailment program was municipal property as well. So there have been some good partnerships with the Kenora District Services Board, which is really number one developer right now within the city when it comes to building affordable. And the only developer building affordable housing right now. So there's a real good partnership between the city of Kenora and the Kenora District Services Board using municipal property to help increase the housing stock in the community. Now, again, target economic development activities is another. Again, that's the strategic disposition of sale of municipal property. There's actually another one, the East Highway, that I think the former council, there's an agreement of purchase and sale where some conditions need to be met. But that could turn into a commercial development on 17 East in terms of potential hotel development in the future. So that would be using municipal property strategically for a commercial development. And identifying future growth areas using municipal property to direct growth infill and some of the fringe lands with potential for municipal service extensions. Counselor Moncrief, this speaks a little bit to how property is sold by the city of Kenora. Council and the corporation of city of Kenora will consider the sole and absolute discretion, the sale and other disposition of land and the ownership of the corporation of the city of Kenora. And there is the policy number PP401 and bylaw 158027. Oh, and that wraps up how you sell land.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Because I'm going to tell you that's all I've heard even before I considered running for Council. Because I cannot believe the city doesn't know what lands they own and developers walk away. So thank you very much.
We've already had a couple of meetings with, if it's not developers, directly agents for developers. And yeah, it's a pleasure to sit down with them in a meeting room in the operations center with a lot, a few strokes, a few keystrokes. We can stop that. We can come up, we can come up with three, four options right off the bat.
Heather, can you...
Shall we go to...
I got it, I got it, I got it. All right, I just got it. He's really good. All right, this isn't my core skill set, all right?
So we keep pushing ahead here. Counselor Burden, please.
Just quickly, Jeff.
Counselor Burden?
You know, I assume that the new policy here regarding selling of city land and lots of in-camera discussions, but I know it's a hot topic about what type of, what is being built? And as opposed to, you know, businesses building and business or social housing, this is a, this is this tension in the community. So I assume we'll have a little bit of process to fully discuss.
It's such a range of municipal property. You will have a wide range of conversations because it's a property matter probably in camera from maybe large economic development type projects all the way down to very, people with very personal interests in what's happening in their neighborhood and around them. They know there's a piece of municipal property there, so GI, I'd like to maybe have that. So you will find a full range of issues before you that will be community-wide down to very, very, very personal and what's happening in my neighborhood. So you're going to see the full, the full spectrum of property disposition issues over the next four years.
And I guess, you know, each one is important to the individual. And that is more, or less important, but I really think we need to be, as Council and as a city, to be very transparent and to be perceived as acknowledging all these concerns, both pro and con, or from every, from the spectrum of citizens in the community. And then really have some frank, frank discussions regarding the merits or the cons about building in certain areas. But I'm sure we'll come back to that.
It gets a little tricky sometimes. You have to remember that, you know, the property is really owned by the community, right? So you're disposing of a community asset. And sometimes it's, sometimes it's easy-peasy because there aren't many issues surrounding it and other times it won't be so easy. But there is a policy in place for that. And each case will be evaluated on its own merits and there will be recommendations coming from the Development Services Department. But at the end of the day, of course, it is up to the elected officials to make the final decision.
Thanks, Jeff.
Any final Council questions? Okay. So tomorrow, we're going to get into finances and then we have governance training next Wednesday. If there's anything else in development services, engineering, infrastructure, community services, HR, if I have anything across the city that we haven't touched on or we have more questions on, please just let me know and we can determine how best to work that into the orientation. Other than that, thank you so much. It takes Jeff to head into that a little bit and we'll see you tomorrow.
Okay. Just so everybody knows, tomorrow...